Trail Planning Board. We have a point where we can have public comments. And our Vanna White is Crystal over here. Crystal, if you'd stand up. She has the sign in for any comments that you might want to make. You have three minutes. And if you think you might want to have a comment, but you're not sure it's better to sign up, and then if you decide that somebody's already asked what you want to ask or make the comment that you wanted to make, then you just say I decline the comment. So if, I'll give you a few minutes. Whoever would like to get up and sign in for public comments. Don't everybody rush at one time? Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I have something that the attorney wants me to read. Unfortunately, over the past several weeks, certain citizens have attended public hearings of this and other town boards and caused disruption, including comments deemed racist and threatening. As a result, I want to clarify for those in attendance the following. You may not speak until recognized and invited to speak by this board. Any comments or outbursts from the audience will be considered disruption of the meeting, and the person causing the disruption will be warned once. Upon a second comment or outburst, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Comments are all limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give up your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation and act without reasonable standards of, within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public hearing. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or this board reasonably believe would imminently result in a disruption of the meeting. But I don't see anybody in here that think that would apply to all this, so I think we're good to go. All right. At this point, Patrick, I think you'd like to address the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's always been, it's always a pleasure to be before you. Simply, it's an update to give the Planning Commission on some items that the Chair and myself, we discussed. It's an update, mainly, it's an update. The first update is, at the end of the month, there will be a land use meeting organized by Union County. Council will be attending, staff will be attending. We will be presenting before Union County on the 28th at four o'clock. And the second day, both of them are open meeting. The second day will be open also for council and the commission to discuss any issues. Also, staff will be present at that time. So I do recommend if the members could attend, it will be a good educational for all of us. Second item I'd like to mention is that we work very closely with council on providing them with an update on all the developments that come toward planning and engineering. We do have all of them posted on our website. Also, they, we have a description for each one of them if council didn't, if the committee didn't know that. That's a product we just offered recently, so if you have any questions or want to know anything about any of these developments, just visit the website. Second item, too, is I like to remind the committee that we do have a downtown master plan that was approved way back, I think probably 2008. And what we're doing as staff is, we're trying to update it as we go, and we communicate all these items before council as we get developments like the Panthers Field, the Artificial Field, any other developments that come in within downtown. We keep updating that downtown master plan. We did provide council with one slide that shows them exactly the number of every town home units, every condominium apartments and single family. And we will continue to do that so our council could be offering good judgment in regard to how to prioritize these projects. The comprehensive plan also, there was a discussion item during last town council meeting in regard to revisiting the comprehensive plan. We are not going to do anything to the UDO, which is ready to go to the attorney, until we meet with Union County to see if their land use plan going to be impacting our UDO. And if it does, we will adjust accordingly. We do have a few projects in the uptown downtown area. One of them is the complete street uptown, which is, we're still waiting on a TIA from Typer, 47 acres to be developed up there. Recently, we received from North Carolina DOT news that they don't have any issues with access management. And this is based on Gribble Roundabout that we have here at Chestnut Parkway and whatever improvements to be done uptown. We work in very closely, several of our council members, they work very closely with adjacent jurisdictions. They're all going to be meeting at the end of the month with Union County. This is in regard to any developments that occur along the peripheral or the boundary of our town. So again, this is an update for the committee, just to keep you up to speed with council and staff. UDO is ready, and like I said, we're not going to turn it to the attorneys until we find out more about what Union County is planning on doing with their land use plan. In regard to any development that comes in here, just to remind the committee members that the first step in the process is when they come in before council for a workshop. That's the recommendation by staff and our attorney. It's working pretty good. It gives the developer a chance to come in and propose a concept before council. Second item, they submit their planning application. We have the community meetings. They come in before the, the planning committee. And the last item, which is number five, will be coming for council for approval. Just one minute on roles and responsibilities for staff. I want to speak on staff's behalf. We do get the planning application in the package. We will try to submit it to the committee in a timely manner. Our target is the Thursday before the meeting. Any related items in regard to UDO and the comprehensive plan, also, we'll try from now on to bring it before your attention. Some of the items that we really get in the planning applications, that most of the time, it kind of surface before council and the planning committee, like demographic studies, school demographic study, the TIA, all these items. In regard to the TIA, most of the developers, they hire their own consultants by the board and the North Carolina rules and regulations. These professionals are allowed to present designs, and they are liable for those designs. So what we do is we take the traffic impact study, staff takes it, review it. By the way, we are more stringent than the state when it comes to the TIA. But we do a very thorough review. We don't question SPEs because they're liable for it and they're qualified to do it. But if we see that something is not right, we do bring it to their attention, and we ask them to make modification. The same thing for access management. So in regard to these professionals for transportation, traffic engineering, we kind of take their word as gold because when they propose mitigation for any development, they're going to offer the maximum they can offer. We can't ask them to ask for more than the max. And in most cases here in Indian Trail, most of the streets are owned by DOT, so they make the final decisions on that. We could state our opinion, but they make that final decisions because they own most of the thoroughfare. Last item I have here to report is when it comes to civil engineering and site design. We do sometimes have a lot of questions about the site design. It's similar to the traffic engineering and transportation engineering. They are liable for impacting any ponds, any flood plains. Parking, we review the parking. We make sure trucks could make it throughout the entire neighborhood. We look at parking, too. Storm drainage is the same thing. That's the state law. None of those developments can be approved unless they're complying with state law. And on top of that, staff, engineering staff and planning, look and, they look and see if they are complying. So there's two, three parties out there that they look at the process and make sure that they're complying. Water and sewer, we've heard every once in a while, you ask about water and sewer. Just to give you an idea about the model that the county deal with, they have 950 miles, miles of pipe. All these pipes, they put them in a model. And before they give the okay to any development in town, they run the model, make sure that they could supply that development with water. We don't pick a lot on that because we're not the water and sewer agency, but we do get notified by the county that the developer is submitting for a development, and they do have the water supply for that. Parking facilities, you know, we look at surface parking lot, parking garages if they're, none of them is there, but we do look at parking. And we make sure that parking is in compliance, too. We, there are a few items in the new UDO where it says that if a development could prove based on some studies that that number can be reduced, we do accept that number. Of course, it has to be based on systematic study, and that study is a good study. Last item is environmental. We are very strict about sediment erosion control and flood plains. So our first priority is to make sure that none of them is getting contaminated or impacted. Otherwise, if it is, that will be a violation to state and federal law. So, Mr. Chair, I hope this information that you and I discussed is a little bit valuable. Staff will be more than happy to elaborate and provide more info if the members feel that they need to have this information or sit down and discuss. But we're looking forward into having the training session. Also, in our adopted budget, we do have a small budget for your committee, and we're planning on bringing our attorney, Kevin, to cover, you know, some areas in the UDO and the comprehensive plan. And this is strictly for your committee. Any questions, if you have any?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I know we've had a couple of people come in a little bit late. If you want to sign up for comments, we have a comment signup sheet over here at the table if you'd like to put your name down. I'd like everybody to make the comments that they feel are appropriate for the meeting. Also, notice on social media that, and I don't know how many here based on, are here based on social media, but somebody put down that this is a council meeting. This actually is the Planning Board meeting. And we are basically a recommending board. We, we report to the council, we recommend or dis, or unrecommend or whatever project. The council, I've seen them in the past, they accept our, our recommendation. Sometimes they, they do something different than what we recommend. But anyway, we're, we're citizens just like you all, we're volunteers, and we want to have a good town. We, we like Indian Trail, and we want it to stay a nice place to live. So your comments are important to us. All right. If you will bear with us, we, it's our time of the year where we do election for officers, so we need to fill out our little cards, so bear with us. Just take a few seconds, and we'll be back with you. I think we had somebody else walk in that if you'd like to sign up for comments, ma'am, the comment sheet's right over at the desk. Thank you. Okay, we go now to a determination of quorum. Do you handle that, Tim?
I'm not sure. Yes, you have a quorum.
We have a quorum, okay. Okay. Approval of the minutes of last meeting. Do we have a motion of approval?
I make a motion to approve our minutes of the last meeting, July 16th, 2019.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. It's carried unanimously. Okay, new business.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, if I may, just read the results of the tally. You are the highest vote getter for the chairman, so congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
We do have a tie vote for the vice chair, so if I may, we can just handle that after we handle business. We can go back and take another vote on that, if that's okay with you?
Yep, that'll be great.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, Tim, you'll, if you'll lead us off on CZ 20190044, the hub, conditional zoning.
Thank you, Chair. And this is a continuation from the previous meeting, so some of this information in the presentation is a replay of what was shown before. And then there's some points that I'll hit on that are new information. That's been updated or provided. This was to rezone approximately 28.284 acres. Current zoning, regional business district. It's, the proposed zoning is for conditional zoning, regional business district, mixed use development. Applicant is Gray Star and the Moser Group. The intent, proposed construction of 650 apartments and a 105 key hotel. There's the concept plan. In case there's some folks here that are new, but this back portion near 74, this back portion is the apartments, and then the hotel closer to the highway. Bridge access across the storm, this drainage way. And the hotel, and this portion, here's the dividing line right there. This and the hotel is for phase one. And the parking along the street there. And then phase two is this other portion. I have a zoomed in map there of phase one. And phase two. Some of the architectural imagery that was provided for the level and class of the development. Here's the existing site. Again, 74, ball fields, recreation area. And then the site where the hotel, and then the apartments in the rear. Here's some general photos around the site between 74 and Chestnut Parkway. Shot down Nelson Lemon Drive. There's a vicinity map a little bit further out. Existing zoning map shows the RBD and some of the other RBD areas around 74. Some of the other local areas, some of the yellowing from the residential areas that are labeled like SF1, that's a yellow that doesn't, doesn't show up very well when it's projected, but that's a residential. You see the other areas as you move towards stallings. There's some land use out there for stallings and a couple, I think, one or two areas for the county. Future land use map. There's a star here for the site, but it's the corridor. US 74 corridor plan is the section in our comprehensive plan that shows future land use and mixed use areas provided. Consistency, the proposed plan for mixed use is consistent with the US 74 corridor plan in the comprehensive plan. Whoops. Mixed use is described in the 74 corridor plan as the following, future development to be mixed use, walkable residential and retail development. The traffic impact analysis, there's some of the mitigation from our transportation folks that do the modeling, provide, you know, what's in blue in the report, but then what's in red are proposed things in the model that is determined, recommendations that will help to get the traffic flowing as the engineers want it to flow. The town is currently working with, and NC DOT working to provide comments on this report that they currently have. For the parking, parking was proposed, they're proposing 975 parking spaces for the apartments. Gray Star provided a typical 1.5 spaces per unit that they've experienced in their other developments. And they're proposing 121 parking spaces for the hotel. In the box there, that's just a close-up of the calculations that were provided in the, on the concept map. For schools, they are required to do a school impact analysis, the projection for 2028, 2029, preschool through high school, projected enrollment, 204 students. Union County provided their input. They showed Indian Trail Elementary School at 92 percent, Sun Valley Middle at 100 percent, and Sun Valley High School with 101 percent. Union County Public Schools noted that the high school projection, as you move further out in time, as, you know, construction goes on, the development, that number will begin to come down, and they're projecting 94 percent at the high school level. And they said additional residential development contributes to high enrollments, and the issues that result from it is the standard that they put in in their responses, since this is a popular community. This is just a summary, this is new, a new slide, a summary of some of the updates of information or additional information pulled. Union County Public Works, water and sewer is available, but they will be submitting, they have to submit their plans when they do their construction drawings. So their final approval will happen at the site plan review stage. Applicants working with Union County Public Works doing a downstream modeling project, the applicant will be providing funds to, to the county for that. Union County Environmental Health, project to be reviewed in site plan review for all existing structures. And that's what they, they kept coming back with to us. And they have to submit their pools for review. People with, with homes, not necessarily, but commercial situations and apartments do need to submit pools in a special submittal to environmental health. Union County Fire Marshal, applicant completed emergency vehicle turn plan that came in after the previous meeting. Fire Marshal reviewed that, and the applicant made some revisions to turns in response to that. Union County Sheriff's Department, Captain Kobel stated at the last meeting that he will get more detailed when he sees the construction documents for review, and that's more of a formal process that goes to the county and submitted through their evolve system. NC DOT, as mentioned before, the TIA is submitted, and it's under review by NC DOT and the town, and the town's provided a few comments that were supplied in an email previously. Applicant must meet all NC DOT requirements, so that's, that's a have to. Community meetings, this information's in the packet from before. Comments were favorable for the location, hotel's a good addition. There were concerns with, with parking previously in those community meetings. Conversation occurred about future housing needs, and the response was the, the new hospital and additional development will be bringing new jobs. Request for additional information, Planning Board voted to delay the recommendation to this meeting, as I mentioned before, it's a continuation. Some of the information provided, there were concerns about some of the information being listed as pending. It was a poor choice of words and previous templates, I guess, that we used. So we, we just provided some, some clarification to that information in a July 23rd email, updated in the revised staff report, and summarized in this presentation. The TIA report provided Engineering Department's first comments and link to report in the 23rd email. School information emailed on the 23rd that that information, for the most part, was, was provided. The school impact study and the comments from public schools. It was mentioned that for confirmation, that three bedrooms at 5 percent, and that's now one of the conditions listed in the, in the list of conditions. And it's also on the concept plans, all those conditions. Email request for NC DOT, current future numbers for Highway 74. Kimley Horn provided, engineering firm for transportation, provided a response July 30th. Recommendation, request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, promotes the goals of comprehensive plan. There's more details in the staff report and what I'll read with the consistency statement, but promotes the goals through quality of life, land use and housing, mobility and transportation, and economic development. It's a reasonable request, staff, thus staff recommends approval with conditions. Oh, so yeah, we received NC DOT comments today. I was just updated on, so we have some feedback from NC DOT. Proposed conditions, there is a list of conditions. See if I can go through these quickly. Staff, you can read most of it on the screen, but staff to confirm that all the pieces from the outside agencies. Comments are made and addressed through the process. The development shall comply with all other applicable requirements of the Town of Indian Trail Unified Development Ordinance. Town approval incorporates and shall comply with all submittals in the case file and corresponding, correspondence presented to the Town Council in support of this application. And it lists some items there. Coordination with the US Postal Service, make sure the postmaster's on board with where mailboxes, the new cluster mailboxes are placed. Trash enclosure, enclosures must comply with the town. Reduction of the lot area for apartments to 1464 square feet. The four-story buildings shown on the concept plan should remain as four-story, will be reduced. Building maximum height should be 70 feet. The applicant must provide 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit. And some other details there. Applicant will reconstruct- Applicant will reconstruct Nelson Lemon Drive to accommodate a two-lane road with 87 60-degree parking spots on both sides of the road, as shown on the concept plan. Uh, architecture should remain in the, the same as submitted in the concept plan. Modern flat roofs. Landscaping facing Independence in the floodplain area should be present as indicated in the concept plan. The main entrance to the project should be on Independence and should serve both the hotel and the apartments. Grading for Phase 1 and any water sewer needs only. Do not grade for Phase 2 during Phase 1 grading. Three-bedroom apartments are restricted to 5% of total of apartments constructed. Amenities include two clubhouses, two pools, dog park and walking trails. Issuance of Phase 2 building permits shall be contingent upon receipt of certificate of occupancy for Phase 1. Oh, that's it? Breathe. Okay. Now we get, uh, where I can, uh, we've received information and, and just presented it. Now, uh, if, if you wish Chair to do, uh, public comments.
Right, okay. All right. Okay, we have, um, opening the, uh, the floor for public comment, we have three minutes. We have a nifty little box up here that they added a while back. It'll turn green when your comments should begin. When you have 30 seconds left, it'll turn yellow and then when your time is up, it will turn red. Will you please come up, state your name and your address and, uh, we're waiting to hear your comments. So first would be Jim Cherry.
My name's Jim Cherry. I own Carolina Made, which is right across the street from where this project's gonna go. I think that this is a biggie even by New York, Washington State standards, 650 is an enormous project. I think it's gonna be a disaster for our community. Uh, I'm not against progress. But if it were condos where people buy them and have a stake in the game, some skin in the game, I think they take care of their projects much better than apartments that are in today and perhaps gone tomorrow. Now neighborhoods and businesses that I've talked to are against this. I think if the neighborhood, if they were trying to run this up on a neighborhood, I think they'd be lined up all the way to the hardware store down there to oppose it. I think the reason they chose the business district, they thought it would be easier to come in and manipulate us and it's right across the street from me and it's gonna be terrible for us at, at my business. Now, they've kept very, very quiet about this thing from day one. I was noticed three to four weeks ago with a letter that I think the city has to rescind out or the town send out about this. I had heard nothing about it. Now, I've been down here 30 years and I generally get customers that use t-shirts that come into my place and buy them. We, we haven't heard anything about this. They just absolutely kept it quiet and, and it bothers me a great deal because I really want the quality of life to be like it has been in Indian Trail. I want the style, a small-town flavor to stay here. And I've experienced this in another area in Charlotte where I built nine little buildings and, and had apartments all around it and when they start bad, they go down fast. Now this is upscale, but, but whether they have to lower their rents to fill them or whatever the cause, when this thing starts down, and it will, now it may be a decade, but I've got five children in here, three in my business and we had to experience, I shared with council two or three weeks ago, all the heartache, the busted windows, the graffiti, the robberies, the break-ins, the rapes, the whole thing that goes with a bad apartment project. Now they're gonna say it's not apples on apples, but it is. And I've experienced it and it's not pretty. I've been down here 30 years, I love the people down here. I've had charlatans come here, they don't go back to Charlotte. You've got a wonderful situation here, guys. Don't destroy it by letting them come in here with this and trying to be a big city. There's nothing wrong with being small. You've got people coming in here knocking your doors down to get in. For God's sakes, don't try to be like somebody else that's built these things and have to go through with this. Ask any police department, ask Stallings about their extended state trouble up there. It don't take long to find a lot of things. I don't want this built. I hope you'll find a reason to say that you agree with the people of Indian Trail. And I think when it comes to council, they're gonna, they're gonna be tons of people down here opposing this.
Thank you for your comment. Our next, uh, comment would be from Lori Simpson. Is that correct? If you will state your name and address.
Uh, my name's Lori Simpson. Um, this is my first time speaking since high school, so I grew up in Indian Trail. I've worked here for 32 years. Um, I actually lived on Matthews Indian Trail Road, the house right up here, the big white house on the right. My dad passed away in 1973 and we moved to Indian Trail Park, which is on Old Monroe Road. Me and my siblings, we actually used to walk to Indian Trail Elementary School through the woods. So that was fun times. And I've been a member of Indian Trail Baptist Church for 44 years. Recently, we have taken away the meaning of Indian Trail. So let's not do more damage to this once small peaceful town with this massive new project. Let the name Indian Trail mean something. Just remember, bigger isn't always better. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Cindy Wyndham. Please state your name and address.
I'm Cindy Wyndham. I live on Friendly Baptist Church Road in Indian Trail. Um, I have been in Indian Trail my entire life. I was born, raised, I work, I still live in Indian Trail, everything is Indian Trail for me. Um, my issue with this thing is the traffic, obviously. Um, at my lunch, when I leave for lunch, it takes me 15 minutes to drive two and a half miles where I'm gonna eat lunch. It takes me longer than that to drive back because of the traffic. Um, I have seen the traffic from 74 at a dead stop all the way down at Brewster's for the light at 74. The traffic is just insane. So I don't understand like how, maybe 74 with the light rail maybe, but this little bitty two-lane road has always been consistent with an Indian Trail, 1,300 more cars or more than or less than 1,300, at least 1,000 more cars on our streets, they just can't handle it. The accidents in front of where I work at Post Office Road, people driving on the wrong side of the road, on the wrong side of the double yellow line to try to get up to the light faster. People running the stop sign at Post Office Road. I have a cop friend, I was like, why don't you sit there, why don't you do some, pull some of these people over, give some people some tickets? And he said it's too dangerous. So when the cops think it's too dangerous because of the traffic issues, that's really bad. We don't need to add 1,000 more cars to our streets. So my issues are the schools being overcrowded. I have a daughter in Porter Ridge. The crime that's gonna come with all these extra people, I'm all for the growth, but I think this is extreme. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Miranda McAllister. State your name and address, please.
My name is Miranda McAllister and I live on Clearwater Drive in Indian Trail. Um, I've lived here my whole life also. I work here, my church is here, my family's here. I love this place and I hate that we're trying to make it such like a big city. This isn't Charlotte and I hate how we're growing up so much. The traffic already is so bad, especially around lunchtime, when I'm going to work, the commutes in the morning and evening. There are so many schools to accommodate the growth, the growing community, and it's hard to get through the school zones. I have to travel through three school zones to go 2.9 miles to my work. I work near the First Citizens Bank, trying to leave work to go to lunch. Also, I nearly get in a wreck daily because people are going over the double solid yellow line to make the light at 74. I do know we're about to do some turns with that, but there's so many people trying to get to the same place at the same time. Adding 975 cars or 700, any, any amount that big, I think, I think would be horrible for us, we're asking for a disaster. I can't imagine how, how bad it's gonna be around here. Most families do have two vehicles, I know we're doing one and a half parking spaces, but most people have two vehicles per family for multifamily housing and that would just be 1,300 plus the hotel. The population has increased in Indian Trail 200% since 2000. The growth is good and Indian Trail already has sustained the growth, all the growth that we can handle. Indian Trail is a fast-growing town because many people are moving here because we love our small town. I love our small town. We don't want to force the citizens who we have in Indian Trail to go somewhere else to a less congested area. My hope today is that you guys will think about this before just making a decision. I'm proud of Indian Trail, I'm proud of the way it is and I don't want it to change.
Thank you for your comment. Matt Harmon. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Matt Harmon. I'm actually an original resident of Indian Trail. I do not currently live in Indian Trail, I live at 511 Willow Run Drive. But I do work in Indian Trail and this has always been a big issue for me because I'm, being an original resident of Indian Trail, I live right next to where that Walmart was built. For two years, it ruined my life. With it constantly being built, they were building it at night, the beepers on the, on the trucks and everything all night long and nobody cared, nobody ever did anything about it. I, I nearly had a nervous breakdown because of this. And when you put a Walmart in, you destroy the community because all the small businesses, they go out of business or they leave town. And we also have nothing but fast food restaurants. We need attractions, we need to do kind of like say what, what Wesley Chapel or Waxall does, where they have a main street downtown that's nice and provides foot traffic and provides places for smaller businesses to grow and to encourage people to get out. A lot of people don't get out nowadays. So why don't we do something like that instead of, instead of just, uh, thinking, well, let's bring in another 650 people so we can get more money in this town? You know, we, there's, there's a point where you have to have control over the development. And just like, just like they've already stated, you cannot have a two-lane road that's been here for 50 years and Monroe Road, also a two-lane road that's been here for my entire lifetime and expect all of these people to be able to, to get about with that little of space. It's almost impossible. And it's, it's, if they're just, if they're just one wreck, like it takes me an hour and a half to get to work and I live 13 miles away. And even when, even when the traffic is not that bad, I live 13 miles away, it takes me 45 minutes to get to work. So at some point, there has to be some control over this development. We have to have infrastructure to be able to support that development. And we also need common sense, you know, like road development, you can't just have people cutting through this lane over here, it's dangerous. And like she said, the cops don't even wanna, they don't even wanna do anything about it because they don't wanna get hurt. So we need common sense development and we need control over the road system and the infrastructure before we do any type of other development. I'm not against development, I'm for common sense development. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Donna Hassafluq.
You pronounced that well.
Yeah, please state your name and address and...
Donna Hassafluq, 5707 Indian Trail Fairview Road. I too am a lifelong resident of the Town of Indian Trail. I don't currently live here, but I have a business here and I own a lot of business property and vacant land that's currently being developed. As I look through the Green Star program and their letter of intent, I find it interesting the way they say they want to add significant vibrancy in a mixed-use urban project, a dynamic mixed-use development. This mixed use seems to be used a lot, it was used in the presentation, but I don't think that that was the intent of the regional business district of mixed use. If you read the definition of the regional business district, it's to provide suitable development standards for the provision of convenience goods, groceries, services and locations along major transportation routes. Not residential, never local residential streets. That's in the UDO. As I look more into it and I look at the conditional zoning application that's on public record in Indian Trail, it's not even completely filled out. It doesn't have the date received on it, it doesn't have the monies collected on it as to what fees were paid or any amounts collected by the town. If you look at the traffic impact study, the study area, which is 3.1, studies US 74. The numbers on that are based on 2017, which is the NC DOT numbers for the annual average daily traffic. The Chestnut Parkway study, there's no available data because that road is so new. The Indian Trail Road is based on the 2016 NC DOT. Indian Trail Unionville Road is based on the 2014 NC DOT and the Matthews Indian Trail Road is based on the 2016. I think all of us in this room know that these numbers couldn't be current with all the traffic conditions that we have on all of these roads now. As some of the previous speakers have said, the traffic congestion and the fact that we have not improved our road system in Indian Trail in decades has, will have a tremendous impact on that, what, what problem that we already have already. If you look at the school impact study, which they also referenced today. These apartments, according to Gray Star, the third quarter of 2021 beat 350 apartments. So they say 204 students will impact the year 28, 29. So for seven years, there's not gonna be any impact on the school system, that's what their study says. Also, as far as the Union County Public Schools, there are 4,581 units that have been approved by council that have not been built. So we've got 4,500.
Your time is up.
4,500. And then you wanna add 650 more.
Thank you for your comments. Michael Falconberry, please come up, state your name and address. And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Michael Falconberry, 519 Pigott Circle. Hotel, yes. Location of the hotel, yes. 650 apartments, no. In a recent email I received from the Economic Development Coordinator, showed the applicant for the hub project suggested putting the Sun Valley Station project within the hub project, which is an outstanding idea. Therefore, you can have a bowling center and a fitness center, which would complement the Chestnut Square Park facilities. Also, parking could be shared between the hub patrons and the Chestnut Square visitors. Once the Chestnut Parkway is completed, those parallel parking spaces are gonna be gone. That's a fact. The additional spaces along LeMond Drive will not be enough to offset what's gonna be proposed for this area in the future. We have an opportunity to proactively address insufficient parking by not putting apartments there, instead put a sporting facility there. That way, the parking spaces can be shared between Chestnut Square Park and the property. Potentially, 2,000 people will be living in 650 apartments. That's a city within a town, population-wise. Okay, the tax revenue for that, according to the emails I received, is we, for 650 apartments, is about 125,000 a year. How much of that profit will be used for additional deputies and for fire protection? Again, you've gotta look at the future, not just now. Five, 10 years down the road, what impact is this gonna bring to this area? I'm all for progress too, but this is too many in one confined space. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next we have Kelly Gilbert. Please come up, state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Hey, I'm Kelly Gilbert, live on 806 Houston Drive. I was a 17-year homeowner here in Indian Trail. Last time I stood up here and spoke to the planning committee, it was because they were gonna rezone behind my house. They're basically gonna put in a business park in my backyard. And everyone on our street came up and begged you guys not to do it. As soon as we sat down, they couldn't raise their hand fast enough to side with the developer. Okay, that's my issue I have here, is the rezoning. It's... It seems that there's rezoning going on everywhere in Indian Trail. Every corner you look at, there's a developer taking it from residential to commercial. Okay? The citizens of Indian Trail elected you guys, I know you guys are planning committee, but the town council, to stand up for them, not be a rubber stamp for a developer every time they want something done. So I had to up and move my family after 17 years because our home values were going to plummet due to this business complex that they agreed to. And I agree with the other people. We don't want, like, Indian Trail, we want to be Indian Trail. It's a great place to live. That's why people moved from Charlotte to here, is it's a great place to live. We don't need to be Charlotte. I don't know what this race is to rezone everything and commercialize everything, but we don't need that. I just, I really appreciate you guys' time, and I really hope that you'll consider what all we've said today, okay? And just remember, you're not a rubber stamp. The citizens put you here. You don't have to just approve everything a certain developer brings to you, okay? And I'll leave you with this quote, "I don't know if there's a skunk in the woodpile, but something stinks." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Last but not least, Tripp Cherry. Please come up, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I think Tripp's having to work so he can pay these taxes. He won't be able to make it tonight, but he sure wanted to be here, but maybe he'll make the council meeting next time.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll close public comments. Okay, now we'll have the applicant present to the board.
Yeah, let me pull that up.
Thank you. So first, I want to start off by saying we, my name is Mackenzie Moser. I'm with the Mos Group, and we hear all of your comments. We are proud of this town and are a part of this town, and your voices are heard, and everything that y'all have said is going into consideration. What I've noticed from a lot of these comments are that some of the facts were not accurate. So we created a project fact sheet that we can pass around to everyone, and I just ask that you do hear us out. We are here for questions for tonight. So I'll pass this project fact sheet around, and then we'll start on the presentation. So thank you for allowing me the time to present tonight. I'm excited to share with you the hub at Downtown Indian Trail. This is a really exciting time to be a part of this town, and we're excited to partner with the town on the vision for the future of Indian Trail. As we've watched the meetings in the past of the town council, we have been impressed with the council putting together the downtown and uptown vision. With this, in the past meetings, we have watched as the council passed a resolution for the hospitality tax, a resolution for the light rail, which will require great density in order to achieve, and Indian Trail has to start somewhere to make this reality. We have also watched the council pass an agreement with the Carolina Panthers. We congratulate the council and the town staff on this vision. It's incredible. Currently, on the town's website, you are advertising for the uptown and downtown vision. The council has directed the town manager to move forward with this vision, and the council has spoken in many meetings to attract millennials and the next generation to this town. On this project, we have worked very closely with the staff on every detail of the project to make sure that this project meets the vision. And as you heard from the staff, that it is supported with the future land use plan and the approval of the staff. The plan we are presenting tonight, we feel is a reflection of the town's desire for the downtown and uptown vision to become a reality, and that's the only reason we're here. This site is very challenging due to wetlands and flood plain, which takes a creative approach in which we feel like we are bringing forward in the largest contiguous parcel in the downtown. So we have to get this right as a team, and we feel like this plan accomplishes all of the resolutions and goals that the town council has. So let's take a look at the hub. The hub is the proposed mixed-use development that will support the future professionals, the silver line, the new hospital, entrepreneurs, and millennials. It will bring a brand-new product and begin the cleanup of independence. Indian Trail has not seen a project like this, and is looking ahead to the future of Indian Trail. The subject size, as discussed, was 28, is 28.28 acres touching Highway 74, Chestnut Parkway, and Nelson Lemon Drive. This is a Class A project that we feel creates a vibrant, economically strong community where citizens can enjoy a high quality of life. The project includes a hotel, 100 to 110 rooms. Currently, there is no hotel in Indian Trail, so people have to go to Matthews or Monroe. And it includes two phases of multifamily development encompassing urban-style apartments. And this is the part where I think there's a lot of confusion. The multifamily is in two phases. The first phase is 350 units of rental product, the clubhouse and amenities, which will begin in 2020 to 2022. Phase two does not begin until phase one is sealed and leased. Phase two is 300 units of rental product, clubhouse and amenities, which will not be built until 2023 to 2025. This offers a walkable front door for the town of Indian Trail and creates the true live-work-play environment adjacent to the town's new town hall, Carolina Courts Sports Complex, the Union Aquatic Center, the Veterans Memorial Garden, and many other future developments in the area, including the artificial turf field. This creates a true downtown with the density and the mix of uses. This slideshow shows the site plan designed by Land Design. The consultant from Land Design is also here tonight that can answer any questions on the design. As you can see, this shows that the phases of the project, we're phasing it very carefully to ensure the proper lease-up in coordination with the completion of the new atrium hospital just up the road. The jobs at the hospital will be quality of jobs, and eventually, over 800 employees will be hired. Phase one is what you see in green, the hotel and 350 apartments that begin in 2020 to 2022, and then phase two is what you see in the lighter green-yellow-ish, 300 apartments, and that is 2023 to 2025. Moving on, we have maximized the development potential while preserving the wetlands to use as an amenity to the project with amazing landscaping and walking trails. This will be a park-like setting that the town will be proud of. Starting at the point at 1 o'clock, the site plan allows for a grand sense of arrival along 74. This will begin the cleanup of Highway 74 and begin to change the culture of 74. We've all been out there. We see what it is now. It will be the gateway of Indian Trail. Moving on, the location for the hotel allows for excellent visibility. The hotel will be a part of phase one along with 350 apartments. The apartments will have the resort-style swimming pool and amenity clubhouse. And lastly, the connectivity to Nelson Lemon Drive. This will be converted to a two-way traffic with 60-degree on-street parking provided by the developer. This will include 87 new spaces as an off-site improvement that will be for the town's benefit. This is a $900,000 contribution to the town's park, and 87 parking spots on the town's land converting Lemon Parkway to the two-way on-street parking. Moving on to the hotel product, as discussed, it's a part of phase one. It will serve not only the town of Indian Trail, but all the sports tournaments, the sports facilities, Carolina Courts, the businesses, et cetera. This allows to us, everyone to stay within the downtown area with the walkability and the amenities. The hotel will be a four-to-five-story modern hotel brand. It will have the Class A amenities package, including the resort-style pool, the coffee bar, the fitness center, tech-forward, the lounge area, and will be a Class A brand, and you'll see examples of that in the following The Class A brand will be comparable to what is pictured, and so on this side, you'll see the potential exteriors. And moving on to the multifamily portion, as discussed, it's in two phases. The first phase, 350 units clubhouse and amenities, and the 2020 to 2022, with the second phase, 300 units, the rental product clubhouse and amenities, 2023 to 2025, all three- and four-story flat-roof urban-style product to add to the ambiance of the downtown. The Class A amenities package includes the resort-style pool, the coffee bar, the fitness center, the fire pits, and the outdoor grilling area, the lounge area, and the dog park. It will have Class A unit finishes, including the granite countertops, the LVT wood plank style flooring, the designer light fixtures, stainless steel appliances. These are examples of the clubhouse, and these are actual renderings of Gray Star And Gray Star is also here tonight that can, and they can answer any questions. They're the global leader for multifamily. Examples of the amenities, the pool, the lounge area. And then the exterior, as you can see, these are Class A materials, as well as the interiors. Moving on to the rent, starting at $1,075 per month, going up to $1,800 a month, with the average being $1,400. These are very comparable rents for the market. This is a little hard to read, but we can provide hard copies of this. We've included the tax benefits as an example of the potential tax benefits for your review. The hotel investment is $14 million, and the multifamily investment is $81 million. Both of these bring significant tax dollars to the town, county, and state. These tax dollars are used for the improvement of the roads, the schools. If you look deeper into the hotel, tax receipts to the municipalities, and then the multifamily projected tax receipts to the municipalities, the total over the next five years is over $7,500,000 to the town, county, and state, and these are great benefits for the municipalities. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share about the hub at Downtown Indian Trail. We would love to answer any questions. We hope to get your support for this project that goes along with the town's vision for the future of Indian Trail. And again, we're here tonight because this is the town's vision. It's not ours. It is supported unanimously by the staff, and we would love the planning board approval as well. If you didn't receive the fact sheet, let me know. If you have any questions, we're all available. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we did, want to do things a little bit differently tonight than we did last time. I usually like to have a more casual meeting, but it got a little bit out of hand, and so I'm going to ask the folks here on the board to please raise their hand when they have a question, so I can make sure I can get your question in. And we only want the developer and their presenter, one at a time, at the podium, talking into the microphone, instead of having a group talking at one time. It just gets too confusing. Something a little bit different, too, just to show hands, how many people are okay with a hotel in this town? And how many people are not okay with a hotel? Okay. All right, just curious. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to open questions for the board members to ask any questions that they have. Ms. Towns has jumped up here real quick with the first one, so turn it over to her.
Will the hotel have banquet room?
Can the other part of the development team come up to the podium as well to answer the question?
Sure, one at a time.
Okay. It's not planned for a banquet room, but the hotels typically have meeting rooms, but it's not a conference center hotel.
The reason for my...
Does that answer your question?
Well, the reason for my question is, since we have Carolina Courts and several parks, and there will be tournaments, and if the group wanted to have some sort of award ceremony...
There's definitely room for that. You have different meeting rooms and conference rooms, but it's not a conference center where there's a huge area, but award ceremonies for teams, those, it would accommodate that type of use.
Yeah. And with regard to parking, has any consideration been given regarding maybe having indoor parking, like they have in some of the medical facilities with a couple of stories?
It has been considered. Mark Kime is here with Land Design, who did the site plan that could speak more to the parking. Okay, and Josh Kanis, well?
Yeah. So I'm Josh Clever with Gray Star. So it is something that we've spent a lot of time thinking about. Parking is obviously very important, you know, both to the town and from our perspective in order to get leases. So we're very focused on making sure we're providing enough parking. The problem with a deck or any kind of structured parking is that it starts to add really significant cost really quickly. So just by way of example, I mean, adding a parking deck to this project would run you somewhere in the $5 to $6 million range, if not significantly more, which starts to become very cross prohibitive. And so, you know, where we've really endeavored to plan it is to plan it such a way that it all parks on a surface parking basis, which is how it does now.
Yes.
And, you know, I know Tim touched on it, but we worked really extensively with the town to get to that 1.5 ratio. We've got some internal proprietary studies. We manage 15,000 units in the Charlotte region, and kind of looking across those units, you know, in comparable suburban submarkets. People generally utilize it about 1.3 per unit.
Yeah, but if...
So we're parking above that.
If Carolina Courts has a couple of tournaments...
Sure.
You may have grandparents, aunts and uncles coming from out of town, and...
Yeah. I'm sorry, I mean to cut you off. Yeah, and something that we're very focused on is making sure that we're securing our parking and making sure that it's really for residents only. And so the parking will be gated, and then in addition to that, we tag our parking. So folks who live in the community will have parking tags. And then we're patrolling the community for folks who are, you know, parking illicitly. But that's really the intent of those 87 spaces there along Lemon, is that's for the town. You know, there's some comments about, well, you're losing spaces, but you're ultimately net gaining, you know, 60, 60-odd spaces, you know, kind of net to the town from a parking perspective.
Thank you.
Sure.
Michael?
Yeah.
Ms. Moser, this might be more directed towards you.
Sorry.
That's okay. So if you have it planned out in two phases, right?
Yes, sir.
So phase one, phase two. What's the rush to have both phases approved now? Couldn't you just, couldn't we just focus on one phase, the first phase in the hotel, and then once that's coming around to being filled up, we'll come back and revisit phase two?
Tim?
I'll interject something, and if you still have a question, you can throw it out. But we're... but we're required, as, you know, doing approvals like this, we require developers to submit their whole plan upfront to be approved, and so that all our tree save calculations and everything can be done upfront for a full approval, and that's kind of how the UDO is built with those calculations, so.
And one other thing with that, it is part of the conditions and part of our rezoning, that that phase two does not begin until phase one is completed and sealed, and it may even be a little later than when that's completed, depending how the leasing's going.
All right, okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
And then, Ms. Towns, I don't think we, did we answer your question?
Yes, but I'm from New York City, so no.
Well, the-
What the end result is.
The apartments, like Josh said, are gated, so that the residents are parking only in their spots, and then we're, the developer is providing additional parking to give to the town, that's not there, it's not existing. We're providing 87 additional spaces that the apartment residents aren't parking on, that's for the town's use.
Okay, Sidney Sandy.
Mr. Chairman, I have three items of concern, if you'll bear with me. One, one is the parking. I see you up the parking to one and a half parking spaces, which gives us 975, but based on our current ordinance, and I did the calculations on it, and I'm sure they have too, but based on our current ordinance, we need 1,422 spaces. In other words, we're 447 parking spaces short for that. And the second item, and I appreciate you making the increase there, but second item is the density. Currently, our ordinance requires 3,350 square feet per unit, per acre, and that comes up to 13 units per acre. And where you've, you wanted, you're requesting to put 29.75, that's more than twice the density that when our current ordinance requires. And the third item that I have concern about is the Marshall Nelson Lemmons Drive, and having an outlet over, near the park over there, I mean, you're dumping traffic over in our park over there, where we've got kids playing and, and parents parking and everything, and so, and we don't know what kind of traffic that's going to put on that, and of course, we don't know what kind of, the problems that we're going to have with our, with the children over there, and the people driving through wherever it's fast or whatever, and of course, this day and time, you've got to be even more cautious concerning strangers. So those are the three items I have concern.
So those three items, I'm going to refer to your staff on-
Yeah. I'll take a shot. For, like, anything that, if they were able to follow, anyone, any developer was able to follow the UDO, we wouldn't need conditional zoning. But, you know, you need to scrutinize, you know, anything that comes through here, but that's part of the conditional zoning process, is to some extent, they need the conditional zoning process to veer off from one thing or another, and it's usually favorable to the town and to the staff if they're trying to fit something into future plans for an area, and will make concessions for certain things. But as, as the planning board, you have to decide how much is too much, or if it's on track, and, but that's how they're able to do that, to veer off from the UDO is through a conditional process, and also through the mixed use process, too, that allows them to meet some of the goals of what, what they're trying to do and what the town has.
A lot of study and effort has gone into creating our ordinance. I mean, I think we need to go by it or either go close to it, one, and same way as far as the parking space, as well as the density. I mean, from 13 units to 29.75 units per acre, I mean, that is just tremendous right there. And so, in fact, and then we're plus, we're 447 parking spaces short. I mean, at least get close, I mean, not, not be that far off, I mean, that's, that's the way I feel about it now. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I mean, and as far as the hotel's concerned, yes, we do need a hotel in the town, but that's, that's a separate issue, and they've tagged these two together, so that's, we'll have to deal with it that way, so.
Yeah, and that's, that's good comments, that's feedback on, on things like that, but that, that was my answer for, you know, kind of the process that we're operating under, but we definitely want your thoughts from your side of things.
Ms. Reese has a question, but real quickly, Tim was nice enough to give me some feedback on the current apartments that we have and the parking. Flagstone has 252 units, and they have 416 parking spaces. The old Copus, I'm not sure what they're, they're called now, is 204 apartments, and they have four, they show 464 parking spaces. Town Center, which I think is proposed, is 352 units, and they show 593. So there's quite a bit more parking in these other units than what, what's being shown in, in this particular project. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Reese.
I have several questions, I'm not sure. I've just kind of been writing stuff down as I go, and I guess some of my questions might be to staff and to town management as well. And the first thing that, that I wanted to know is, the light rail seems to be a big part of this project, and I know that we've been working with Charlotte and trying to get that accomplished. What kind of, how does that look for us? Because for me, I've, I've spent a lot of time, folks, talking to some of you, and to some other people, and I appreciate y'all coming out, because five years ago, I was you, and, you know, I was up here and, and stating the way that I felt, and what I did to, to make myself more involved as I started coming to town council meetings, and I would highly recommend that everybody that, that has an interest in the town of Indian Trail do that. But getting back on track, I apologize. The light rail seems to be a big part of this, and I know that staff has done a lot of work, and I would like to hear, and this is just one of my questions, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what we expect from that, because for me, that's, and for a lot of the constituents of our council that I've spoken to, that's a big part of what they want to know, well, how do we know we're getting that for sure? So for me, that's an important question to start with.
I'll take this one, Mrs. Reese. Just for everyone, just to let you know, I spent seven years as a senior light rail engineer on the first light rail project in Charlotte. So when, when it came, we thought they were crazy, it will never work. But if you drive the light rail right now, all the way from I-485 to UNCC, you will see 37,000 units is built next to every station. To answer your question, Mrs. Reese, the way it works is, right now, we do have the silver line, and there is a million dollar, approximately a million dollar study to study land use in three different municipalities, which is Matthews, Stallings, and Indian Trail, that showed interest of extending that silver line. It takes probably about six to seven years for it to happen, but the last station on the light rail, from my previous experience, is the best station. To give you an example, during two hours, two hours peak, peak time during the morning and afternoon, the way we submitted it to Metropolitan Transit Committee, myself and another council, you could transport approximately 6,000 to 7,000 people in those two hours, if they come and park here, if we provide, most of the time, the light rail or cats provide those parking garages at the end of the, the line, as you see at I-485, and they put them at every stations, too. The silver line is being funded, so right now, this million dollar study is to add additional, sort of like, study to approve the extension to those three sites. The hospital in Stallings is a perfect structure or entity that every city in America look for, to have a hospital, so people could transport on the light rail back and forth to the, to the hospital. But what we presented to the MTC is very generic idea, which is, we could bring, rather than two tracks, we could bring one track, they come in in 10 minutes, load and unload, and get back to the hospital, which is the second station. The federal government will not allow, or will not fund any projects if you don't have the density. So if we move forward with creating the density according to the master plan, and the way we have in mind, then the federal government will come in and approve the project and contribute some funding. Definitely will be some local funding, because sometimes it's 20/80. But I, I hope that answers your question. The rider, it's all depends on the ridership. You won't get the ridership unless you have the density. So in addition to the dense area that, if it could happen here in downtown Indian Trail, also you have to add to it all the people that drive from Union County, parks in Indian Trail, get on the light rail and go downtown, or to UNCC, or to I-485. If you don't have the density, you will not get the approval from the federal government.
Thank you, Patrick, that helps a lot. And again, this probably is going to go to staff, but the conditional zoning, which is what we're here to establish, because I'm getting some mixed, I'm not sure what the actual facts are, because I noticed in the paperwork, it said that they were offered and, and staff approved, and with 1.5 parking spots per unit?
Yes.
So does that fall, is that part of the conditional zoning we are changing, we are making an allowance, so that that can be allowed for this development?
Yeah, that'll be a part of the conditions, and part of the approval.
Okay, so that would settle, because what I've heard is we're breaking ordinances and we're doing whatnot, so just for my own clarification, the conditional rezoning is going to fix that, so that's not a legal issue for us.
Right, right.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, I heard, I'm not sure which gentleman it was, maybe with Gray, Grace, talk, and I, I might have misunderstood, but I heard somebody say something about gated parking and patrolling the parking that's tagged, so my question, is security planned for this development?
Yeah, we, we do typically have onsite security, and then, you know, we obviously rely on public police forces to supplement that.
Okay, we have an amazing law enforcement community here in Indian Trail that we contract through the Union County Sheriff's Department, and, you know, last month, we, we asked them, and they can't give us any information, because the project obviously isn't underway, they can't give us an analysis for something that is yet to exist.
Sure.
So for me, when I heard that word, security, that really piques my interest, because that shows a willingness on your part to take some responsibility, and I would hope that, I know our, our local law enforcement agency would certainly work with you on that, but I would like to have a commitment from the presenters here, that a security patrol is in your plan, because that's very important. A lot of the, of the outreach that I had with the community, their big concern is, well, when you have a hotel and you have apartments, you have crime. And if, you know, and again, we're just a recommending board here, but I want to give my elected town council, you know, all, all these words and records to look back on when we've asked questions, that I hope are meaningful to them when they have to make the decision, if they allow this to come, to, to happen here in Indian Trail. So what I want to know is, what exactly is the security that-
Yeah, so it's a great question, and I kind of want to address the, the security and crime conversation more generally, but to, to address your point directly, I mean, yes, we have onsite security, and then additionally, we, we have what we refer to as secured access. So we have perimeter security, where the site is fenced, and then there's vehicular gates, and that's all FOB access, and so residents-
The entire apartment complexes, or just the parking?
The apartment complex. And the intent is that, you know, you can't have folks loitering and wandering around. And then in addition, the buildings themselves are access controlled, and so you have to FOB into the building, and then, you know, as you might expect, units have individual locks.
So security would be patrolling the, the perimeter?
The, well, through the parking lot. I mean, they would stay onsite, right? We're not-
And I'm just really curious, I don't, I just, the first I've heard of a fence, and maybe it's in there, and I just haven't looked closely enough at it.
I don't know that it's shown on our plan, and so I don't know that we've developed it to that point.
And, you know what, I'm, I'm happy to leave that up to town council, if we can get this through to them, then I'm happy to let them worry about that.
And again, I mean, that's, that's something where if, if you guys or town council came to us and said, hey, we think a fence is a really bad idea, then we're open to the conversation. Are residents, are, are security focused, and, and kind of transition into that conversation a little bit? I mean, you know, I think there are a lot of preconceived notions about apartments. I think the industry has changed drastically over the last, you know, 15 to 20 years, and what we're building is, is truly Class A, whereas I think a lot of, you know, 1970s, 80s, and even early 90s product was Class B, Class C, kind of brought with it a certain cast of characters, and was at a certain rent threshold. Our rents, like you saw, you know, are comparable to a mortgage, right? I mean, and a lot of our residents tend to be, they tend to be millennials, we have a significant proportion of retiring baby boomers who are downsizing, and they're there for, you know, high quality finishes, not keeping up a lawn, you know, cashing out a down payment, and so, you know, our demographic reflects a lot of the communities around us, and so-
And I have spoken to some elderly people who have, who have reflected to me that, hey, yeah, I'd like to live someplace that I don't have to worry about the yards and whatnot.
Yeah.
So, security is something I think that we'll have to, you know, leave to, to council. I hope that comes up when, in, in discussions.
It's, like I said, it's a huge focus for ours, because it's a huge focus for residents.
And, and I, I want to tell you, Ms. Moser, I appreciate the, the phase chart that you showed us, because I think that's important to point out, and I just want to clarify, the hotel is first?
Correct.
Is in phase one, I should say?
Phase one.
And the furthest of the, is also in phase one?
Right, and on that note-
I'm sorry, can she come to the podium, please? I apologize.
On that note, with the phasing, it is a requirement from the town to have everything shown?
Right.
But that second phase, we're open to having it in a timeline that the staff sees fit. We have, have to have it on there, but our focus initially is phase one, the hotel and the 350 apartments.
Okay, and?
And then you also mentioned this, and so did some others with the parking deck, with, with the silver line, that would be provided, like Patrick said, with the station.
I think that would give, the way that it's phased out, according to that, that graphic that you showed, that would give the town more time to come to terms with what we're trying to accomplish in the actual hub of the project. And, and lastly, this is a very, a small thing, and then I'll just finish with one last thing that I have to say, but what exactly are the walking trails? How, how does that work? And, and the retail space, I heard both of those things mentioned, but I don't, I didn't see specifically.
So where, on this map, where you see the blue, that's where the walking trails will be, there's not retail in this project, it's just the hotel and the multifamily.
Okay. Is there room for retail development around this area uptown, it would be where we would expect, what are we going to have within walking distance for this mixed use? Because you, I know you mentioned the memorial and, and things like that, but do we have, and this again, might be a question for the town, do we have something for retail as that's part of our mixed use development?
It's okay, Mrs. Reese. We, we've been approached by a couple of developers, one of them is the Moser Group, to, to purchase some of the properties that we have within the downtown, for commercial use, and I think they did commit the last time that they are very interested in creating some commercial. But the intent of the downtown and the uptown is to, that's why we had this Infinity Trail right here, and we spent $300,000 at Chase's office to, because they're more centralized right now, is to provide, we have about 147 parking spaces there, it's all going to be monitored by cameras, so we're trying to create the link between uptown and downtown. So if we create, we do have a lot of commercial uptown, the Typar property, the 47 acres, three quarter of their site is going to be commercial and office, and the Moser Group also willing to create some commercial if we sell some of our properties to them, so, but they-
So, but they did submit bids on the properties, but I have not taken that to council yet until we've taken it one step at a time, and we're making sure that the right commercial is in the right place.
That is accurate.
Well, thank you, everybody, for answering my questions. And I said, you know, spoken to a lot of people in the community about this, and I just want to finish my portion of the question asking phase with saying that I really have a lot of faith in our town staff and all the work that they've put into it. And I have faith in our elected officials, that they will make the right decisions for the right reasons in Indian Trail. I appreciate everybody coming out and participating tonight. That's all I have, Chairman.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah. So I want to talk about two things that was brought up by the public comments, but really hasn't been addressed yet. One is the traffic. Traffic seems to be a really big issue, especially on 74, and I know there's a lot of construction right now, but, and I'm not really that familiar with how the DOT works. But do they have any kind of plans on, you know, just straightening this whole mess out? People, I mean, people taking a lunch and taking them 15 minutes to get down the road, that's kind of-
Let me add to Michael's question, too. Staff, you got me some information. 2016 DOT showed that 60,000 cars go down Independence Boulevard every day. Your traffic study is showing daily coming out of the apartments and the hotel, 4,253 trips coming out of it, but you only show 261 in the AM peak areas coming out of there, and 314 PM peak, which, I just looked at that and scratched my head, but I'd like to get comments on Michael's question and this information.
Actually, I know Patrick's got some thoughts, too, but I'm going to invite Laura Reed, who's our traffic engineer up, because she did the study.
Okay.
So, she's the right person to speak to it.
Thank you so much for your questions. Ms. Joshua, my name is Laura Reed, I work with Kimley Horn. I'm the traffic engineer who did the TIA for the site, and I've been working with Patrick and Todd and DOT to work through the TIA for the site. And so I guess to touch on a couple of your questions, so you're correct in those trip generation numbers that we sent over, and so when we determine those numbers, they're based off of a national standard, we use ITE trip generation. It's a big manual, it has a bunch of different land uses, and NC DOT has standards for how you calculate those trip generation numbers based off of that manual. And so from that, we did come up with that 4,253 daily trips, but it also has trip generation numbers for the AM and the PM peak hours, and those are the numbers that we use for our TIA.
And what do you consider peak hours?
So from a peak hour standpoint, it's giving you the one hour of highest trip generation in the 7 to 9 AM window and the 4 to 6 PM window. So essentially, in that two-hour window, what is the one hour that generates the most trips? And that's the hour that we use in our analysis.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Yeah. Did you have anything to answer?
Just to add, Mr. Chair, today, Todd requested from DOT their final on the TIA, the access management, we received from their access management office that access to the site is okay. The only item that's still outstanding, which is insignificant to the site, the developer is requesting immediate opening right there in front of the entrance, and that's what they're trying to evaluate right now. But entrances, in and out, the site itself, we do have a documentation from them that so far they don't have any issue with that.
Okay.
And then the next part, not, thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am. Next part is about the school. I don't suppose there's anyone here from Union County Public Schools, but at any rate, you know, capacity, and I think this is probably a greater issue for Union County as a whole, but, you know, capacity seems to be pretty high. I know there's a bond package that's going to be taking care of a lot of that overcapacity for the high school, that does leave the middle school overcapacity. So with the Moser Group, have you guys ever really given any thought to, like, working with the community to kind of make sure that we don't have overpopulation in the schools and, you know, issues with traffic? And just in general terms, working with the school system and addressing those issues when you make these plans?
Yes. We do, and that's why we're here. Some valley is currently under construction, so those issues of the overpopulation, those are eliminated next year.
Well, for the high school, right, but not the middle school?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question for the planning board and everyone in this room, and it might sound kind of weird, but who in this room is a parent?
Raise your hands if you are.
Or who in this room was a rebellious child that when their parents said something that they fought against them and said, no, 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 whether it was, I want that piece of candy, or I don't want to go to football practice or lacrosse practice? I was that kid. But the reason why I say that is, there's only so much that we can say during this time, but what I want everyone in this room to know that is that there have been many hours, weeks, months, years that have gone into planning for this town. And your staff works day in and day out on the planning for the future of this town. So if you're a parent and your kid says, absolutely not, I'm not doing what you tell me to do, but you as a parent, you know what's best for your child's development and growth. If your staff is saying that this is a project that they have reviewed extensively, many hours that are, that you cannot have in these type of settings, if they're saying that this is a project that they can support, I just want you all to think about that and think about your parenting and your childhood as an example of that.
I've got a couple of questions and a comment to that statement. I've lived in this town 64 years, I've seen a lot of staff people come and go, some of them live in this town, some of them don't live in this town, but what the staff comes up with, when they move and they go another place, we're left to hold the bag. So, just make that comment. For Patrick, question for you. I know density is important for light rail, but I know that the Mooresville, Huntersville area has struggled, they were trying to use the Norfolk and Southern lines, and they won't allow them to do it. People came out against the light rail up there. Why would you think Indian Trail would come here over Huntersville and Mooresville and the Lake Norman area with the huge density that they have there?
We're comparing an apple to oranges here. That was a commuter rail, that was not the light rail. There's a big difference between the two, just to make that correction. So, light rail always work when it connects communities and you have a station along the light rail. This is commuter rail, that means you get on it and it doesn't make that many stops. Also, when I was with CATS, they faced a lot of issues with grade crossing and intersections, large number of them. So they're two different systems, we can't compare them to each other. The system that's coming on Independence and Monroe, and if you drive by old Independence where the old, Independence where the old Kmart used to be, that entire area is going to be redeveloped, and that's what we call transit oriented development. It is, it is, it will be developed to accommodate light rail and accommodate this multimodal transportation. There's a lot of benefit from it, and I was totally against it when I was with engineering, but when they proposed the project and we started diving into it, we just turned 180 and we made it happen. So it's two different systems.
Okay. The next question, obviously, there's a lot of people who are against 650 apartments, and I think that one of our councilmen had talked to the town attorney about maybe breaking this up a little bit, and I guess if we rezone all this property to do this project, then they will have the by right to go ahead and do the, what I would call the third phase, which is all the apartments. And I'm wondering if the builder would compromise and build a hotel, build one of the phases of these apartments, have the other properties stay zoned, whatever it is now, commercial, and then come back before the board so we can see how the traffic and light rail and everything else is coming along and get that, have that come up for approval or not being approved at the time.
So, I mean, it is something that we've thought a lot about, and we've talked a lot about with council, and, you know, our strong preference is to let the market dictate that, and that's why we've structured it the way we have, that's why we're not going to go out and drop 650 units on the ground. We don't think that's a good idea. You guys don't think that's a good idea, it's not a good idea. But the way we've set it up is, we can't go start Phase 2 until Phase 1 is done. I got no intention of doing that anyways. Yeah, it's conditionally required, so I mean, we're legally obligated to kind of abide by that. And so, you know, the way we look at it is, let's let the market judge that timing. I mean, they may lease up very, very quickly, in which case, that's great, and, you know, we can kind of proceed, and they may lease up a little slower, in which case, we can react to that.
So there's no compromise as far as keeping another piece of the property-
I would say we've already compromised in the sense that we've now, we've set a very strict limit that we can't build Phase 2 until Phase 1 is complete. That was a negotiated compromise.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Dennis, I'm trying to understand what you're asking. What you're asking is, is that approve Phase 1, approve the hotel, and leave the second phase as the RBD?
Right, and bring it back up when you finish your apartment, first apartment complex, so we can see how it affects the highway, how it affects the schools, because things change in four or five years. So I have a lot of reservations, me personally, about approving 650 units without having some concept of how it's going to affect the highway system and the schools.
Sure, sure. I'm actually open to that, I'm leaving that to RBD. I'd like to leave my site plan the same, I'd like to leave the, you know, the open areas the same, you know, the parking, but I would be open to doing that. And so that is something that I consider, you know, a relatively reasonable request. But while I'm up here, again, my name is Dennis Moser with the Moser Group, do you mind if I address Mr. McCarver?
Sure, go ahead.
Just a couple of things, I think those are great questions, and on the parking, and you also, Ms. Reese, addressed about the parking and the parking deck, and Ms. Towns, you know, about a parking deck, but Patrick, getting a parking deck a part of your proposal with the silver line, and a parking deck as a proposal in this downtown area, isn't it a part of the, what the council, you know, we're here tonight, not on the Moser Group's request, not on Gray Star's request, we're here tonight because over the years, we've watched the town, you know, vote on the silver line, vote on the downtown, you know, vision, vote on the NFL plan, which that NFL plan, folks, this was presented, this downtown plan was presented to the folks that contributed the money with the Panthers, as this being part of it, you know, the silver line being part of it, everything that they had voted on. We're here tonight at the request of Ms. Lemons, who owns the land. She had an option to choose several different developers, and she came to us and said, hey, we'd like for you to do this. I'm not here on my accord. I'm here because she requested that, and it was part of, we talked to the council members, we've spoken to each one of the council members, each one of us gave us their assurance that, hey, we do support this. This is where we're headed with this town, we do want the silver line, we do want a downtown and an uptown. So this is the only reason that we're here, is because of the town's vision, not ours. And we love it, we support it, we're all in on, you know, the town asking for a hotel tax, occupancy tax, we're all in on creating this downtown and creating tremendous value here for the residents. But Patrick, if you could address that about, I think you've got planned a parking deck in the downtown, and a parking deck that's associated with the silver line, and I know it's been talked about, but I was just curious of where that stands, that may help with a lot of the questions on the parking, you know, in the future, you know, there is plans to assist with, you know, parking with part of this silver line.
Parking garages is what we call park, excuse me, parking structures. If the silver line extend the light rail to Indian Trail, it's going to be similar to UNCC or I-485. There has to be a parking garage where everybody from Union County, Indian Trail, park their cars, get on the light rail. Also, the parking garage came in as a question, went down by council. We're growing, you know, we want more business for Carolina Courts, we want to improve downtown and uptown. Somewhere down the line, you know, we're going to run out of land, and if we want to create downtown and uptown, there has to be a parking structure. There is a Carolina Courts, if I'm not mistaken, Chase, I think it's in Concord, and I think what they did, just across the street from it, they built a three-story parking garage, because their business is doing good there. So we have to react to growth, you know, whether it's this development, the Panthers field, you know, when I presented the artificial field to council, I presented it with little seating area around it, it's like little small stadium, we can afford it, it's not in the budget right now, but ultimately, you know, question, I mean, council asked the question, say, well, Patrick, what can you put out there? Will there be somebody to buy name and right? Can we work with Union County on creating a seating area there to make it more successful? All that stuff is going to bring more, require more parking, whether it's a parking structure or not. In regard to traffic, if I make the opportunity, I think Mr. McCarver asked a good question. North Carolina DOT, when it comes to traffic, they have a model, they have what they call area plan model, which include Independence Boulevard, it includes, any traffic comes in from I-485, the bypass, and Monroe Road. We were very fortunate that council moved forward with supporting Monroe Road and having a local contribution of $5 million to widen that street. That street will have capacity to absorb some traffic. Chestnut Parkway right here, from Independence, by this development all the way to Monroe Road, is going to be a four-lane roadway, some of it, other section, the bridge will be four-lane, from Gribble to Monroe will be four-lane, but first phase of Chestnut Parkway, we have not surrendered, DOT would like to have it, but we're not going to surrender that, because we do have 100 parking spaces on it. We need to take advantage of that. Back to Independence Boulevard, the reason why North Carolina DOT, they're not too strict about this site, because it could very easily discharge in the morning and in the afternoon for commuters from that site to Charlotte, back and forth, we have a highway out there. If that site, the 650 apartment, or whatever it is, 450 apartment, if it was some in another location in town, probably staff will be the first one to say, we're not going to approve that project, because it will have a tremendous impact on the street system. Now, this Chestnut Parkway right here should release 20% of the traffic on Indian Trail where we put in the complete street. Independence Boulevard also, we were told by North Carolina DOT that the traffic will be reduced by 20%. If you drive it right now with the super street, you see a big platoon speeding, going faster, and not much congestion at the intersection, that was the intent of it. And we got to keep in mind, too, that the bypass is there that took a lot of traffic out of Independence Boulevard. So if you ask me, I'm a transportation and traffic engineer by trade, I do concur with North Carolina DOT when they say, you know, this site or any other sites within the downtown, uptown will not have major issues with traffic. Last item, I would like to say, we widen our streets, we're growing, if it's a smart growth, I don't think we'll have any issue with that. And that's our job and our commitment to council and to you guys, to make sure that this growth is smart. Schools have to grow, like roadways, like any other item. And I'm pretty sure if we dig into Union County Public Schools- And I'm pretty sure if we dig into Union County public schools, that they do have a future plan for a growth for every, whether elementary, middle, or high school. They're not going to remain the same size, and that's what they're doing right now at the high school, is a $21 million project to improve their sports facilities and whatever buildings that they have. So, as a staff, Mr. Chair, I'd like to assure you that we work based on systematic study, real information, that we capture from the stakeholders, North Carolina DOT or whoever, and also from the design team. And, I mean, I hope we answered all your questions tonight. We feel that the downtown, uptown project is, it will be good for Indian Trail. And that also gives our council a chance to decide if they want to concentrate the density within downtown and don't do it throughout the entire town. That's a, that's a good thing, too, to protect residential neighborhood that they spread out throughout the town and leave the traffic, concentrate the traffic next to the highways and Monroe Road, the four-lane Boulevard and the bypass. So, this area right here, we're very fortunate that we're not too far away from the bypass and Independence and Monroe Road and Chestnut Parkway. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dennis, I do think that I'm fine with proving myself and improving our team's ability to complete this product, project, and the town being extremely happy with it. So, I am open, you know, again, I'd like to emphasize to what you're saying, is leave phase two zoned as is, approve, you know, phase one and the hotel, and let me prove myself and make sure that it's exactly what, you know, we said it was going to be, exactly that it meets the town council, because that's, we're all here because you were appointed, you know, by the town council, and we're here because of the town council's visions. We think it's amazing. This has got to be one of the greatest town councils in the history of this town in the fact that they're looking so far in the future with this, and voting for this Silver Line, and trying to make all these improvements to the parks and the light rail. So, we're tickled to death to be a part of this, and Ms. Lemmons choosing us to be a part of this, and very thankful for it. So, we're open to proving ourselves and then coming back and going through the same process and asking again on phase two. So, I think that's, if that's what you'd like to see, you know, we're open to that. This is all, you know, part of this process. And we love this town. We have lived here my whole life as well, and not in the town, but in Union County. And my office has been here 25 years, and I love working here and love the folks in it, and I surely don't want to offend anyone here, and I appreciate, you know, you coming out and speaking. But again, we're here based on the council's vision for the town in the future and the staff's vision for the town in the future. We were invited to join this, and we're thankful that we were. So, I appreciate, you know, your time and looking at being open to, hey, if this won't work, hey, what about this? So, I'm open to that.
Excuse me. Go ahead. I just need to interject a concern. If there is a major change like that in the concept plan for the conditional study, that will affect your tree save, that will affect your TIA, that will affect things that we need to look at as staff again, and they'll be, we'll need to go back up, do a review period, and come back before planning board. So, it's almost like a small start over. So, that's a radical change to the application.
Yeah. I guess, you know, just voted along the merits then for what we've presented.
So, you don't want to wait?
We don't want to wait to go, you know, through the process and all of that. And it's, I didn't realize that we would have, you know, all those differences and changes, and we're willing to commit to whatever tree save, you know, and all those things. And it's, it's not, you know, that, you know, big a deal, but we've committed to Ms. Lemon that we would move the process forward, and we just don't have the time, you know, to keep delaying it. So, I guess, you know, make the decision based on the fact that, you know, I think the way it'll play out is we'll begin building in 2020, 2021, we'll be in lease up through 2023. I think that the second phase would not be constructed until '24 to '25, and then you've got a couple of years of lease up there. So, the impact is well out into the future.
I'm just curious, and this doesn't have anything to do with our vote tonight, but in your folks out in the audience, how many people in their lifetime has lived in an apartment at one point or another? Raise your hand. People start off in life, they don't have money for a down payment, they go through a divorce, have to go find a place to live for a while, older folks need a place to, you know, they don't want to take their nest egg and put it in a down payment house. So, I'm not against apartments, but 650 is a tough pill to swallow, and I wish we could, me personally, I wish we could come up with some sort of compromise where, you know, we could reduce the apartments. We, I think the hotel would be nice. But at this point, anybody else have questions?
Dennis, let me ask you this. What about delaying phase two in a more lengthy timeframe, like out four years, five years, six years? Delaying the phase two, approving, you know, phase one and the apartments, but then pushing, you know, approving the total project, but not starting phase two until a certain date out?
At this point, I don't know that the people in this town want that or will go for it. I don't, you know, it's a tough.
Again, this is about the town's vision of the Silver Line and everything that they've already voted on, and what the council's already moved forward with, what your staff has worked so hard on. They've been amazing in working with us, implementing, you know, the vision of the town council. So, it's, you know, this has been in works quite some time. This is not something new that, you know, it's advertised on your website, the uptown and the downtown. So, I'm open to what you're saying, and I'm flexible with that. I just don't think that, you know, with what Tim's saying, that, is there a way, Tim? Is there other options, Patrick, that we can work through that without it being a major change?
It's going to take time. If you make a major change, I mean, unless someone disagrees with me, but.
How long, how much, how much time is time?
Well, I have a question. I mean, I applaud you, Mr. Moser, for making that concession and offering that, and obviously we have rules and regulations that we have to adhere to, but the fact that you're willing to state that and try and make that kind of a commitment, I would, I would say, since we are a recommending board, and they're open to that type of a negotiation, that we place that in the lap of the council. It would be what I would prefer.
That's fine. We would prefer a decision tonight, that's for sure, to move it on to the council to the next meeting.
How long would it take? How long would it take to redo it with the trees and the TIA?
It would take more than the next two town council meetings, and they're saying they're on a tight schedule. So, it's either you give me the time or...
Yeah, we can't consider that. We've got to go to the next council meeting.
I just, I just feel like, I'm just speaking to the board before we make a motion on this, is that, you know, I mean, I think that we have discussed this, that staff has given us everything that we've asked for, the developer has given us everything that we've asked for, the people have spoken to us and answered our questions, and thank you for giving us what we've asked for. But as a, as just a member of this board, I feel like we've done our part, and it's time to, you know, let the council dive into the details with staff and, you know, their workshops, and let them get more in-depth with it. We have different demographics than we've had, that changes every few years, and, you know, let the town council answer to us, their constituents, and, you know, let them do their jobs with staff. And, you know, I'm, I don't know what kind of motion I need to make if we're even to that point yet. I mean, you know, but I just, that's how I feel about it. I think, feel like we've asked a lot of questions, we've gotten a lot of, a lot of feedback and answers, and I think that council, thank you for being present tonight, those of you that are here, to, you know, see what, what kind of things we want to know, too. Shouldn't make it to your diocese, but that's all I wanted to say about, Chairman.
I just, you know, I want everybody out there to know that we listen to you, and we live here, we, you know, agree with a lot of things that you say, and maybe this isn't anything that they'll, you know, that they will go with, I don't know, but I just, you know, I can't support 650 apartments, not at this time, not in this town. So, maybe 300, you know, maybe we can make a motion, 300, and a hotel, send it to the council, and let them, let them decide, because they, they're the ultimate decision, but that's...
Yeah, let me know, let me know when you're ready, and I'll read off the first step.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we're ready.
Okay. And we start off with step one, making the required consistency findings. Basically, it'll come down to it, it is or is not either consistent or reasonable, and I'll read through it, and you can vote on if it is or is not, or even change what I'm saying, but it's pretty lengthy. So, I'll do my, take my first shot here. The proposed UTO amendment is or is not consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Quality of life, goal number one. The proposed request will give the opportunity to establish a unique identity in this area and start to bring the US 74 corridor plan to fruition with residential and commercial uses. The provision of these multiple uses will enable the creation of a sense of place. Land use and housing goal, number one. The proposed project will promote compatibility of land uses between the residential neighborhood and commercial uses. Land use and housing goal, number five. The proposed request will provide high-quality design to ensure attractive land development and redevelopment. Mobility and transportation goal, number five. The proposed project integrates land use recommendations from the US 74 corridor revitalization study. I've talked too much tonight. Economic development goal, number five. The proposed project combines initiatives with land use and transportation plans by following the comprehensive plans, US 74 corridor plan section, which was incorporated from the multi-jurisdictional US 74 corridor revitalization study. Number two, the reasonableness part of it. This rezoning request is or is not a reasonable request and is or is not in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of quality of life, land use, and housing, mobility and transportation, and economic development. So, you'll be voting on whether these statements are or are not consistent and reasonable, and then we'll move to step two for the final recommendation.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion for is or is not.
I'd like a motion that we approve, consistency point.
For the 650 apartments?
No, 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 for...
Oh, for what you just, okay. Wait a minute now. If we approve this, what implication is that? That's for 650 apartments, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, are you coming up with a motion for 650 apartments?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, I thought we're just approving...
Sorry.
No, I apologize. Okay, never mind. I retract it.
Right.
You didn't finish it. You can restate it.
Yeah. Well, now, I'm not sure what else is...
Well, I mean, we've got the option. Here's our options. We can approve 650 apartments. We can turn down 650 apartments, and the hotel, too. Or we can recommend to the town council the hotel with 300 apartments, and they go back and they, which they don't want to do, but give them the option, because I like to, I always like to try to compromise and be reasonable, where they could take a part of that and leave it as a current zoning for phase three, and then come back before whoever is on this board in five years. Or any other suggestions you guys have?
I'll make a motion to approve the hotel with 300 apartments.
Well, one is 300, the other's 350.
Just for clarification, there's 350.
To our folks out here, it's 300.
In phase one.
The hotel with 350 apartments.
Yeah, this is, this is the reasonableness and consistency statement. We'll have to vote on it first. Not the condition. You're doing...
That's what I thought I was voting on first.
Yeah, the statement I just read is what we're voting on at the moment, and...
Make a motion that proposed UTO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan as read by Tim.
But now, is that going to clear 650 apartments?
Well, that's, this is part of your, the reasonableness and consistency statement is a statement by law on providing additional backup for these basic reasonableness and consistency.
We can, we can vote on that with a modification, correct?
You can't add a, you can't add a condition to it. Either it is or it is not consistent.
So, if we're going to say we don't want 650 apartments, then we have to turn, we have to vote that down.
That's, that's your call. Yeah, you're not recognized right now.
So, we have to, we have to vote that down if we're not going to approve 650 apartments?
Typically, it's voted down, but you need to, you know, focus on what I've said and what's in your packet.
Right.
That reasonableness and consistency statement is a part of the vote.
We don't see 650 apartments as reasonable, I think, but I, you know, I don't know what the rest of these folks are going to vote here tonight.
It's basically the goals, you know, the goals that I mentioned are those, you know, is this project, the proposed project, consistent with those goals of the comprehensive plan? And is the request reasonable? And is it in the public interest?
Okay, and so, the public tonight has said they don't feel right about it.
So, there's a motion on the floor. So, I'll...
Think about what you're doing, Michelle, here, real quick.
I have, I have thought about what I'm doing, and I realize I'm probably going uphill, but, I mean, the way that I, the way that I approach this is that they've agreed, they've agreed to compromise, they've agreed to renegotiate, and I think as a recommending board, I mean, and I have a question. If, if it doesn't pass right here, even though I've just made the motion, and it gets all voted down, I mean, does that, it's never going to go before council? Council will not get a chance to?
No, they'll still get it.
Okay.
They will still get it.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, so I guess the stance that I'm taking, what...
Well, I understand the urgency of the project, but my point being is that with them being willing to negotiate at that next level, which we can't do right here and now in the planning stages because they have to get a foothold on the project, but it's here, it's on public record, he said it before God and everybody, that phase one consists of the hotel and the first, the first phase of the apartments, and they're willing to see what effect that has on our town as a whole. And to me, I see that as a compromise, and I think that I have enough faith in our council and our town staff to let them work through the details. As a recommending board, I feel like everybody has given us what they want, and I know we're passionate about it, I know what means, I know you've grown up here, a lot of people in this room have grown up here, so I know it's important, but for our purposes, for my purposes, for what I feel I bring to this situation tonight, I feel like everything that I've asked for has been answered and accounted for, and it's time to give it to...
Excuse me, ma'am. May I speak?
No, no, you can't speak out of place.
We had public comments, and just bear with us. We're going through this whole process, so bear with us.
You know, and I'm just, I'm just trying to state the case as to why I feel the way that I do, is, you know, the project, I've stated in the past, I think it's, I think it's a good, it's a good way... think it's a good, it's a good way to, to, to get rolling in, in where Indian Trail is headed. That meets our long-term goals as a town.
Okay.
And-
Do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that I just made, I think I said it properly the first time.
Okay. Do we have any other motions? We can, we can have two on the board if you want, and we'll vote on each one of them or three of them or whatever. Sidney Sandy?
Let's just cut to the chase. On the CZ 2019-0044, the hub, based on the density of it, it being 200, 650 versus what the staff calls for, our ordinance requires 283, and the 975 parking spaces versus the 422 that's needed, which makes a short 477, I make a motion it'd be rejected.
Mr. Chair, there's already a motion on the floor.
Well, we're going to vote on each one.
No, that motion has to be addressed first.
We're going to vote on Michelle's first. Okay. All in favor of Michelle's motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, all opposed, raise your hand. All for it? Michelle?
Unfortunately, confused.
You're confused. Okay. So we have three against, one for, one abstaining. Okay. Sidney Sandy? Would you bring your motion up again?
Mr. Chairman, there, there has to be a specific reason to abstain if there's a, a direct conflict of interest, direct financial gain, otherwise, you're obligated to vote.
Okay. Which way are you going to vote?
There is no financial gain, there isn't a conflict of interest, but everything has been flipping and flopping, and I felt that the motion should have been repeated so that we could vote because other people interjected with something else, and so what are we voting on?
Let's go back and start all over again. Michelle, make your motion.
I make the motion that the proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan as set forth by town staff.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Okay. Four against, one for. Sidney Sandy, please make your motion.
Well, I make a motion based on the, that's being 447 parking spaces short and the density being 200, 650 versus 283, I make a motion that the CZ 2019-0044, the hub, be rejected.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? So it's, what, did you vote? Okay, three to two. Okay. Three to two for the motion. Now, so everybody know this goes to town council next. We're strictly a recommending board, they'll listen to what we have to say, then they'll make their own decisions, so the, the next town council meeting will be, what date? Next Tuesday?
Yeah, September the 10th. We have to do notice, notification, so it, it couldn't make it to next week's.
Okay, okay. In the meantime, you know, I'd like to see some sort of a compromise, you know, but anyway, we're finished with this one and on to the next subject.
Yeah, I think there's, there is one. We still have the, the House on Monroe Road?
Thank you all for coming.
We'll hash it out all night long, so we can make a decision whether we only recommend anyone.
Well, we, 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 you want to recess now?
I mean, that's just, I mean, that just sort of makes you some agitated standing.
We're going to wait a few minutes, let everybody get out.
So, anyway, that's, oh, I, I, I bet it, I bet it, I bet everybody was packed full, standing, and, you don't have to, you know, you know, and they don't hear, they don't hear, yeah, I hear them, but we hear them. Yeah. 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 I don't believe, I don't believe. Yeah. 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 I'm afraid we're going to be, we're going to be, we're going to be, we got to make a decision. We don't make our own decision, we're county. I want everybody here to know that they got to say what they wanted to say, we're listening to them, and try to compromise. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. All these projects, yeah, I mean, if they, if they don't have two, two spaces for, that would put us at 1300 and 13 versus 1422, yes, that'd be, that, I think that we could deal with that, but if I were this project manager, I'd wait a month and redo some of those.
What do you think, Chair? Should I start or wait?
Hang on, Ms. Towns, are you ready to get started again, or?
Yeah. So she just comes to me around.
Oh, okay, okay. You'll come up here and walk around?
No, I'm going to stay back.
Okay.
So, I thought, I thought we were just voting on, that it was consistent, that staff approved, that's what I thought.
Yeah, so it was confusing, so I want to make sure everybody knew.
Yeah, the more, the more confused I got, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's just, I don't know.
Do we need a recess?
Does-
I have a serving breakfast.
Does this-
Well, let's go ahead and get started.
Yeah. Is she coming back, or what's the deal?
She is coming back, but I'm going to record the amount of time that she's not at the diocese, so that'll depend on the votes, if the votes valid.
Okay.
Can we take ten minutes?
She needs to step off a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's take, uh-
We still have, we still have quorum, so the board can-
We still got a quorum, she says.
Yeah, okay, all right, we'll go ahead then.
Okay. Okay. This is for 4025 Old Monroe Road, ZM 2019-0061 zoning amendment. The request is to rezone approximately .68 acres. The current zoning is Neighborhood Business District within the Old Monroe Village Center overlay. The proposed zoning is single-family, low-density residential within the same overlay. The applicant is Benita Thomas and Deborah Presley. The intent is to sell the existing home as a residential structure instead of a commercial structure requiring various improvements to the site. Subject property is pointed out in the diagram, it's along Old Monroe Road. There's a photograph of the subject property, the house, and photographs looking north and south along Old Monroe Road in front of the house. Existing zoning, as I've mentioned earlier, there's a lot of single-family residential in the area, so that yellow doesn't show up, but you see the SF1s, the Neighborhood Business District, there's the home, that's part of this rezoning, and the neighboring house is also NBD. It's a business. There's also some NBD down on Chestnut Lane. Future zoning, there's a star up in that area, and there's a lot of future mixed-use type of uses in that area for the future, but neighboring on residential for the future also, just adjacent to it. Staff analysis, applicant previously rezoned the property September 2017 from SF1 to NBD. Applicant stated that the previous rezoning was found not to be a cost-effective avenue for buyers with the town restrictions and regulations. Proposed SF1 zoning is not consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map showing mixed use, but is consistent with the status of other similar homes in the area also shown as future mixed use. If this rezoning is approved and a future owner wishes to rezone the property from residential, they will still be required to meet the town's comprehensive plan, which would still direct them in that commercial direction, such as NBD. It wouldn't relieve them of that. Staff recommendation, request is not consistent with the comprehensive plan but is consistent with other residential properties in the area, and property must still satisfy the comprehensive plan if rezoned from SF1. It promotes the goals of the comprehensive plan for land use and housing. It's a reasonable request, and staff recommends this approval. Next up, receive information and public comments. I know that, from what we've been told, just to add a footnote, is, you know, the, the families had an applicant, or a, a potential buyer that came forward before, and they were for commercial, and the requirements with, with the new right-of-way that's going to be there on the roadway in addition to parking requirements, the site was pretty restrictive, and they lost that buyer. So they're requesting, so that the family, after the passing of their father, for the time being, that it, it stay as it was, is to go back to a single-family home for the time being, so that they can at least sell the house for now, and then hopefully, you know, someday in the future, further can be done to it. But, thank you for letting me add that. So I don't know if there's any public comments.
Okay. If you'd like to come up and state your name and address and-
It's the applicant, yeah.
Deborah Presley, 2973 White Store Road in Waynesboro. I grew up in Indian Trail, right there, in that home. The correction is, we've been through four potential buyers that walked off.
Right.
So, that's what I wanted to add.
So you, you both are the owners of the property?
Yeah.
I got you, okay.
Well, actually, us and our siblings.
Okay, I understand, yeah.
Eventually.
And so the, basically, the requirements of the, of the town with the UDO couldn't meet the commercial zoning, is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, not for the, the, the uses that were, were being put forth at the time, right?
The lot size was the problem.
Right.
I don't think the lot size was looked at when it was approved because of the potential widening of Monroe Road.
Correct.
There is not enough room in the front yard for the allotted places that you guys require per square footage, or the number of offices that would be in the, in the house. So to go, to, to alleviate that, to go around the sides, there's not enough room on the right, and there's not enough room on the left, so there's no place to park.
You're called in betwixt and between, huh?
Right, right.
Yeah.
So that, that was really the issue, and I think the last lady that had a contract on the house was looking at going around the left side, but you guys wanted her to have two lanes with a retaining wall, and there's not even enough property on the left to do that. So she just, I'm done, just like the other three.
Right.
It, it was just, I, I mean, it was, the cost was going to be astronomical to do what you guys wanted them to do, to bring that property up to commercial, and there wasn't a bank institution that would let them lend the money, you know, to do that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All righty, so any public comments regarding at all? I think we kind of skipped all that, but, anyway, go ahead, Sidney.
Mr. Chairman, based on, based on staff's recommendation on ZM 2019-0061, I make a motion to be approved.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
And if- All in favor? You need something, Tim, first of all?
Yeah, the same old consistency statement.
Okay.
But not as long as the previous one. Thank goodness. The first part, the proposed UDO amendment is or is not consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. First one, land use and housing goal, number one, the proposed map amendment will help to further this goal by promoting a mix of different types of land uses within the Old Hick, Old Monroe Village Center. Number two, the rezoning request is or is not reasonable and is or is not in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of land use and housing. It is or is not consistent with the adopted plans within Indian Trail, and so you just vote on, is it or is it not?
Right.
And it sounds like, yeah.
Sounds like we like it, huh? Okay. All right, so we have a motion to accept as read?
I make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second? All in favor, right hand. It's unanimous. Ms. Towns, by the way, left at 8:25, so she was not feeling well. Okay, okay.
And, do we count the previous vote, or do we?
We can do it again.
I don't know if it made it to a vote before I stopped him, before I stopped you, but-
Yeah, we need to practice, so.
Yeah. The, step two, is there a recommendation for the favorable or unfavorable recommendation to town council?
Okay. Do we have a motion in favor or not in favor?
I make the motion to be in favor.
Okay, we have a second? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Good luck with it. Have you got a buyer yet? No.
I don't know.
I know.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you, your patience through this other issue, so.
So, okay.
Thank you. Any other business, other than just-
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tim.
Oh, that's right, we get to vote.
Mr. Chairman, we do need to vote on vice chair, so I have just made some makeshift cards, if you'll just take that vote real quick, Crystal will tally it, and we'll determine our vice chair.
Okay, okay.
Like, where are you pinning? Thank you. I have two, anybody? Here, I don't need a vote.
Just take one and check one of the boxes and pass it to Crystal, please.
Thank you.
All right, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Where's it going to roll?
The unanimous, unanimous vote for vice chair is Michael McCarver. Congratulations.
Okay, do we adjourn? All in favor, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Raise your right hand if you approve.
Stand or stand up.
All right, thank you all.
Congratulations, sir.